Call to order the Committee of the Whole for Monday, October 6, 2025. And Clerk Malone, please call the roll.
Nardini.
Here.
Basido.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Beremus absent. Bellinger.
Here.
Chenko.
Here.
Hill.
Present.
Bram.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Talluto absent. Baker.
Here.
Nudira.
Here.
Virgil.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. Clerk Malone, has anyone signed in for public comment for the Committee of the Whole?
No.
All right. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment that didn't have the opportunity? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the business before the committee. Item three, review of the fiscal year 2026 budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to introduce the 2026 operating budget for City Council's consideration. The 2026 budget consists of 17 different funds. The city's budget process allocates resources and prioritizes programs and projects. A difficult task each year, as a balance must be struck between the cost to provide those services and the available revenues. The transmittal letter included in the budget offers highlights of the 2026 budget, both citywide and for individual funds. This year, we have several positive updates for City Council. The Stormwater Fund, as a first one, which includes a well-positioned fund for 2026. The city continues to complete important stormwater projects in Elmhurst. And in 2026, we plan to replace existing storm sewers, make the ditch and swale improvements in areas of the North Growl Woods subdivision. The city continues to work on engineering for spring and Eggleston stormwater improvements, which are set for construction in 2027. These projects will be funded without the need to issue additional bonds. Next is the Parking Fund. The current budget aligns with the projections reviewed by the Finance Committee in 2024. The Parking Fund has a positive cash flow for the first time since the pandemic. Next is the Municipal Utility Fund, which continues the capital program outlined as part of the Capital Plan and Rate Study. Director Coyle will get into further details in a few minutes about the MUF. And finally, the Central Fleet Fund. The City Council approved the creation of the city's 17th fund, the Central Fleet Fund, which is new to the budget this year. This fund is the result of a referral to City Council to fund fleet replacement in a way that avoids dramatic swings to the operating expenditure budget each year. The greatest challenge for the city as we move into 2026 is positioning the city's general fund for the future. The city prepares its general fund budget to maintain a fund balance between 25% and 33% of operating expenses. The proposed budget submitted maintains the city's 25% fund balance policy. However, many reductions and revenue recommendations are included in the proposed budget to maintain that necessary balance. Beginning in 2020, the general fund was the recipient of $8.8 million in federal government stimulus funding from the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act. As can be seen in the fund balance graph on page 1-9 of the transmittal letter, those funds raised the fund balance well above our policy limits. Those stimulus funds, combined with less-than-expected pandemic impact for revenues, provided the city the ability to avoid any tax increases or substantial budget reductions in the last five years. Each year, the city has budgeted a deficit to draw down the fund balance to the 25% policy limit. As noted in the 2024 budget transmittal letter, all stimulus funds would be exhausted at the end of 2024, likely creating a challenge for the 2025 budget. Further compounding this issue now in the general fund, the city health insurance cost for employees is anticipated to increase by $1 million from 2025 to 2026 due to extraordinary claims and cost increases due to GLP-1 drugs. And finally, required pension contributions are increasing by $645,000 in the general fund. Director Coyle and I are going to tag-team a little bit tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to her to talk about a couple other items in the budget.
I'm going to give everyone a quick snapshot of kind of the 30,000-foot review of the 2026 budget. And as Jim and I talk through this, you can follow along. We're going to follow through a lot of the items that are discussed in the transmittal letter. So I'm going to be talking about 1-3, which is just kind of the overall city as a whole. So if we look at that 30,000-foot level, this is regardless of funds. The proposed revenue for the city of Elmhurst for fiscal year 2026 totaled $274 million. This is an increase of $60 million or 28% from the 2025 budget. From the prior to current year budget, the two largest changes in revenue are debt proceeds increasing by $28.3 million and intergovernmental revenues increasing by $19.6 million. Debt proceeds of $44.5 million are budgeted for construction of a new police station, and $8.2 million is budgeted for the metro station improvements. Intergovernmental revenue is increasing due to grants of $18.4 million for the metro station improvements. On the expense side, again, at this 30,000-foot level, proposed expenses or expenditures for the city for fiscal year 2026 totaled $273 million. The two largest expense categories are salaries and wages, $37 million or 14% of the overall budget, and capital, $113 million or 42%. Proposed expenses increased by $45 million and largely relate to annual changes in the capital plan. The police station construction, an increase of $41 million, and the metro station improvements, an increase of $23 million, are budgeted to begin construction in 2026.
Thank you, Christina. So I'm switching to the capital budget. The city uses the five-year capital expenditure budget as the baseline for the 2026 capital budget, adjusting projects as priorities and funding dictates. Overall, the city is budgeting $113.3 million in capital projects in 2026 compared with $76.3 million in the prior year. The three major projects account for 70% of the 2026 capital budget and include the police station, the metro station improvements, and potable water improvements, which include the pumping stations, water reservoirs, which are beyond their designed life and need major rehab. Rehab is budgeted at $7.8 million in 2026 and will be financed through low-interest loans through the Illinois EPA. These loans are repaid by the capital investment recovery charges on the city's utility bill.
Now, we're going to turn our focus into each of the city's major funds that we're going to talk about this evening. The first fund that I'm going to talk about is the city's general fund. The general fund is the city's main operating fund. It provides the core services that the city provides to our residents, our public safety, our public works, our streets. Our community development services are all provided by that general fund. As Manager Grabowski mentioned earlier, the city has a policy of managing its general fund budget such that we maintain our 25% to 33% fund balance. That's what the city defines as a balanced budget, is a budget that maintains that fund balance. And you can think of that like our savings, right, in the general fund. As Manager Grabowski noted earlier, the stimulus funds that we had received as part of the kind of post-pandemic era, those were all exhausted and used, as they were supposed to, by the end of 2024. And those sustained the general fund for a five-year period to really make it not necessary to increase taxes or to cut expenses to maintain our fund balance policy. The fund balance policy at the end of 2024 was $23.1 million. The general fund adopted 2025 budget with carryovers, anticipated drawing down $7.7 million, leaving a fund balance of $15.4 million or 29% fund balance. The general fund is estimated to end 2025 under budget better than projected by reducing fund balance by $3.4 million. This means that the general fund for 2025, to remain within policy limits, must decrease no more than $5.5 million. This year, the submitted budgets for all departments resulted in a deficit of $10.3 million. To produce the budget presented today, there were expense cuts that the city is recommending, and there are revenue enhancements that are also being recommended as part of this process today that we will go into further detail on. One note aside that I think is really important to explain, the capital budget is largely funded by the capital fund. So when we talk about operating budget and operating impact of the general fund, that really is mostly exclusive of capital items. So just as we think about, you know, the impacts on the general fund, and I'll walk through that in more detail as we go through the analysis of the general fund, this is really kind of not a capital-driven item. If you look on page 1-6 of the transmittal letter, I'm going to ask everybody to flip there because it's really helpful to see the charts that we have here so we can explain how the general fund is evolving from year to year and to understand some of the key items that we need to think about. General fund revenues for 2026 total $121.9 million and represent an increase of $40.9 million or 50%. That may sound like a big increase. However, the increase is entirely borne by an increase in bond proceeds of $41.5 million for construction of the new police station. To understand the true revenue change from year to year, it is important to control for two major shifts in the general fund. And in the middle of page 1-6, that really helps you understand what the net impact of the general fund is. So if you look in the graph, it looks at what the total revenue change is. And we need to kind of exclude two kind of one-time items. The bond proceeds for the police station, because they substantially increase revenues for a one-time event, and then the creation of the Central Fleet Fund. So when we created the Central Fleet Fund, there are revenues and expenses that moved out of the general fund into this new Central Fleet Fund. So when we look at the general fund in total, we must really exclude the bond proceeds and exclude the creation of the Central Fleet Fund to really come to a true understanding of what the revenue increase is.
Director Coyle, just so everyone's on the same page, could you just take two minutes and explain? We passed it tonight, actually, I think, but there's a lot of material. So just two minutes of what's happening, what we're doing on this Central Fleet Fund, which was discussed in detail in finance but may not be completely on the radar of others.
So the Central Fleet Fund is an internal service fund. And what that means is it's a fund that's created that charges other funds or other departments within the city to provide services. So we have always had a central equipment maintenance department, and they are charged with maintaining the fleet for the entire city. And one of the referrals that came out of this budget process last year was a referral to determine if there was a way we could fund fleet purchases that required less volatile swings in the operating budget. And I'll give an example. A fire truck is a very expensive piece of equipment. When we need to purchase one, we need to come up with $1 million. And that's really hard from year to year to have your operating budget swing by $1 million that you need to find to purchase that fire truck. And so many communities use what's called an internal service fund. And the fund that was proposed has a maintenance component, where each department contributes their share of maintenance to the Central Fleet Fund. And then those maintenance contributions are used to pay for our maintenance operating costs. This is salaries, benefits, gasoline, parts, contracted repairs, all of those central equipment maintenance expenses. So those expenses are getting shifted out of the general fund where they used to live to this new fleet fund. And each department will be charged its share of those maintenance expenses. That allocation was already being done. However, the allocation, the revenue, was coming back into the general fund. So that's really not a new concept for us. It's just moving to a different fund. The next part is vehicle replacement. And so each department will now get assessed its share of a replacement cost for its fleet. So instead of needing to come up with $1 million for a fire truck in a particular year, the fire department, and this is just on a very basic level, will contribute a fraction of that replacement every year to the Central Fleet Fund so that when a fire truck needs to be purchased, funds are there and available to be purchased. And it smoothes out the impact of the operating fund so that on an operating basis, we can have a very systematic and rational way to budget for these large vehicle purchases. And so each department will make a contribution from that department to the fleet fund. And now, when we talk about the fleet fund as one of our funds for the budget, that's when we'll talk about what are all the departments contributing, what are our maintenance expenses, what vehicles are we actually purchasing, and where is the fund balance of that fund? So that'll be a new fund that we will look at each year.
So for the people on the council, I think Alderman Bram was here when we converted from the municipal fiscal year to the calendar year. It made comparison a little hard because it was, well, it was nine months and we're projecting. And same thing's going to happen here when we look at, as we're doing on page 1-6, subtracting out or making sure that we're trying to compare how this fleet fund ties into what last year's budget would be versus next year. So you stand by for five years, we won't have to worry about that anymore. But for this year, we have to be mindful of it. But thank you, and continue.
So overall, if you look at the bottom of that chart on page 1-6, net revenue increases by 3.4% or $2.5 million. Overall, taxes increased by $3.2 million or 8%. We will talk about the property tax in a minute. However, that is budgeted to increase by $1.9 million. Combined sales, grocery taxes, and use taxes increased by 0.7 million or 4%. Home real sales taxes anticipated to increase by 0.4 million or 10%. The 2026 does propose an increase to the local motor fuel tax. This would increase revenues by $215,000 and would keep Elmhurst comparable with peer communities. Intergovernmental revenue is budgeted to increase by $1 million due to the award of the additional Route 83 grant for the pedestrian bridge that Mayor Levin mentioned just a moment ago. Moving on to the right side of the page, if you look kind of the middle down, we'll talk about expenses in total. General fund expenditures for 2026 total $127.4 million and represent an increase of $38.7 million or 44%. As with revenues, this increase is borne by the construction costs of the police station budgeted at $44.8 million. The table on page 1-7 does, for expenses, what I just explained to you that the table on 1.6 does. It looks at what's the net increase to the general fund budget on the expense side once you take out these larger one-time items. And you'll see that the net expenses for the general fund increased by 0.4 million or 0.5%. Turning to page 1-8, we tried to break down for you what is causing the change in that 0.4%. And at the top of the page, it breaks it into operating and capital. The operating budget is increasing by 1.3 million or 2.1%. The capital budget is actually decreasing by 0.4 million or 3.3%. And I'd say that's the capital budget excluding the police station. And then transfers is decreasing by 0.4 million or 19%. And then further down below, the second chart on page 1-8, that further dives into the operating expense changes for the general fund to show that the two major changes in operating expenses from an increase side are wages going up by 0.9 million or 3.5%. Many of those wage increases are based on contractual agreements that we have. And then, as Manager Grabowski mentioned earlier, we are seeing a substantial increase of $1 million in the health insurance for the city's health insurance plan. And our pension costs for both fire and police pension and our IMRF for our municipal employees are increasing $645,000. So those are the main drivers in the change in operating expense in year-over-year. Moving on to page 1-9, projects the general fund balance as included in this budget, drawing down to the 25% limit at the end of 2026 as we budgeted.
So Mayor, as I started with my comments, the general fund is going to be the challenge for us. And so what Christina just talked about is a lot. So maybe you want to pause. I don't know if there's any questions. If there's anything...
But just, I want to make sure, and too bad Chair Talluto's not here. So over the last few years, particularly for the new alderman, if you look at this chart on 1-9, you see that we had this top black line, that we had additional funds that put us way above our 25% to 33% reserve. And the idea, the thought process over those years was, why would we raise property taxes or other revenues when we have excess funds? So it's not exactly drawing down necessarily, but using those funds to supplement what was needed. So those excess funds funded operations. And as you follow the chart across to 25, as these federal fund programs we had were used, we're getting to the point where the revenues, or I should say, the fund balance is going to be in danger of going below that level. So it's not that we're spending more. It's not that our normal revenues aren't there. It's just like you get a gift from your aunt and you say, well, you know, I'm going to spend it to, you know, fund operations for a while. And then when you use the gift up, then we have to start paying for it out of our own pocket. So it seems a little confusing, but we're not making decisions now. But operating in the back of our minds is that we have to look now at certain expense cuts perhaps, or certain revenue enhancements, because without those funds that we were drawing down on now, all of a sudden, but not unexpected, the amount of money we're bringing in doesn't pay for all of our expenses. I just want to make sure that everyone understands what this chart means and that, as we go forward, that sort of operating in the background of our minds. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have the good fortune of having the last three years.
Could you summarize the last three years for us?
So as I look at the same graph the last three years, including the proposed, this graph looks very similar in nature, right? And so I'm sure I'll get my head around why there seems to be some added concern here. I think it has to do with the police station, some of the other things that you've highlighted. But somehow, some way, I mean, literally, it's almost like a perfect snapshot, page to page. If I took the labels off, I don't think, you know, it's like a wine, you know, which year was this, you know? So I'm trying to get my head around why they look so similar in nature. And, you know, the proposed always seems to, you know, end up better than, you know, the proposed and the estimated, you know, out-years have a tendency to be within the range.
Just one question, though. I don't think the police station really affects this.
Oh, because the general fund.
Right.
So.
So there are a couple of things that I can answer to that. Part of that is how the stimulus dollars carried over from year to year. So we received a lot of those. If you go back to the chart here on 1-9, you know, we received the majority of the stimulus dollars in 2020 and 2021 is when we got those dollars in. It took a while to spend them. So I think when we were looking in previous budgets, because those funds were carried over, as opposed to, you know, it looked like they were being spent faster than they were. So because projects drew out over time, the kind of the ramp to spend those was slower. But there was, you know, a legal requirement that we spend those by the end of 2024, and those were spent by the end of 2024. We do tend to end our current budget better than we project. We've spent this year considerable effort fine-tuning those numbers because we did see, you know, the deficit that we were looking towards. Do I think we'll still end 2025 a little bit better than we've projected? If everything continues the way it is, yes. But it could snow buckets in December, and all of a sudden, our snow costs are way higher than we think, and that can go the other way as well. So that is one of the reasons why we do tend to continue to perform better. I think the other thing that I would just highlight in why I think this year is different, one, again, we don't have, those stimulus dollars are not there anymore, right? That is just dollars that just aren't there. The $1 million increase in health insurance plus a $600,000 increase in pension costs is really something that we have not seen in many years. I don't think we've ever seen a health insurance increase that large. And that's certainly a huge impact to our budget.
So I was saying, like, most businesses, like, I know we budget 8%, and this is a 16%.
Depending on plan, it's between a 14% to 18%, 19% increase.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Can I have a follow-up to that? So with respect to the benefits, the wages I get, you know, some of that's collective bargaining, but the benefits, is it specific to our carriers? Is this something going on in other communities? What is going on?
So this is something that I think many people in many communities are seeing. So we are part of a health insurance pool of several municipalities that pool together to purchase health insurance that helps mitigate risk and provides better rates for us to do so. We know another health insurance pool that is also seeing very large increases, just as we are. For us specifically, there's two reasons that our health insurance budget is going up. One is, we, as the city, as well as our pool that we belong to, has had a lot of very large claims. That has not only increased our rates for next year, but has also drawn down the reserves of the health insurance pool, such that we have to contribute additional amounts to bring those reserves back up. So it's not just a rate increase, it's a reserve replenishment as well. The other factor is GLP-1 drugs. Those are the, you know, whether they're for diabetes or for weight loss, those drugs are having a substantial impact on the cost to our plan as they are expensive medications.
Very helpful. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Virgil.
Sorry, just want to go back for a minute on page 1-7. On the table for the row where it talks about the creation of the Central Fleet Fund, the dollar change column there for that row where it says minus 0.3, I'm trying to understand the math. Is that actually a correct number there? Seems like to me it should be negative 3.1. Am I missing something?
Yeah.
Well, that's correct.
So that one is the, sorry, I'm doing math here.
Are we subtracting the 26 budget from the 25 budget?
Correct. Yeah. So the 0.3 should be a higher number.
You get a finder's fee for that, Alderman Virgil. Unfortunately, it's negative, so you owe us, but okay. All right. Continue.
The next point to touch on is the property tax levy that is included in the recommended budget. I will note that the Finance Committee will be starting to discuss this at the next meeting. This is a topic that they take a lot of time and a lot of thought into reviewing the recommended levy for the year.
I want to height, are you moving on from property tax? Or did I cut you off in the middle?
Starting property tax.
You're still on it?
I'm going to start it, yeah.
Oh, you're going to start. Go ahead. I thought there might be more.
So the city of Elmhurst represents seven cents of every property tax dollar paid by Elmhurst property owners. 93% of property tax bills supports other government agencies. The city also has the third lowest property tax rate in DuPage County. And this is when you control to make sure we're comparing apples and oranges with those communities that have fire departments and those that do not. Out of 34 communities, the city ranks 32. The city's property tax levy supports the city's general fund, the main operating fund of the city. 59% of the property tax funds the city's required contributions to the police and firefighter pension funds. This contribution is increasing by $614,000 or 7% in 2026. 5% of the levy funds the majority of pension contributions for other municipal employees. The city's required contribution to the municipal pension fund, IMRF, is increasing by 10% in 2026. The proposed levy covers $819,300 of the city's $873,100 IMRF budget for 2026. That is to say, the police and fire pensions, the property tax, cover... That is to say, the police and fire pensions, the property tax covers completely the IMRF, the, the property tax levy covers the large portion of it, but not the entire IMRF amount. Last, the city has proposed an increase to the corporate levy of a million dollars from the prior year. This increases to offset proposed, this proposed increase is to offset the health insurance increases and maintain the city's 25% fund balance policy. One important thing to note, the police station project will not increase the property tax levy in 2026. The city models the impact of the proposed tax levy on the median value home, which is approximately $500,000. In 2025, the average $500,000 home paid $692 to the city. The proposed levy would increase the property taxes on this home to $56. As noted above, the city has the third lowest property tax rate in DuPage County. In 2024, the average $500,000 home amongst all DuPage County municipalities paid $1,578 for city or village, city and fire services. The proposed levy for the city of Elmhurst remains less than half of the DuPage County average.
Could you add two things, just so the council understands it may be different? Talk about, one topic is the automatic raises that in our levy that are attendant to police and fire pensions? And the second thing is what new growth means in terms of our property taxes?
So the police and firefighter pension funds, the city has historically levied the required contribution to the police and fire pension. And so a large portion of our levy is the contribution to those two funds.
And it's my understanding that state statute says we have to do that?
Correct.
Okay. So people will see their taxes going up, even if we don't do anything, they might see them go up, and they probably will, because pension contributions go up. The state statute says whatever we're actuarially determined to levy, we have to levy. So that's beyond our control. And then new growth?
The other topic is what new growth is. And I'll, I'll explain, new growth is new construction. So that would be everything from a new building being constructed to an addition upon your house. So anything that is increasing, increasing the taxable property value within the city. And one of the reasons that economic development is encouraged is that the more that we can increase new growth in the city of Elmhurst, that benefits all taxpayers in that if you take the same, I always describe property taxes as the property tax pie, right? We levy a levy and, and that there's a pie, and what the pie determines is what portion of the pie each property taxpayer pays, right? That's, the, the county takes the levy that we pass, they put it over the pie, and that determines what amount Alderman Brennan is going to pay versus the amount that Alderman Chenko is going to pay. When new growth happens, that increases the pie. And if the pie gets bigger, and I'm going to use Alderman Brennan, I'm going to pick on him, if Alderman Brennan's, you know, house doesn't get bigger, then his share of the pie is going to go down. So his tax bill is going to go down, even though he really hasn't done anything. And so that's why new growth is important, and that's why that's beneficial to property taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you. Continue. Alderman Bram.
I'm going to have trouble phrasing this question, but in regards to that new growth, one of the biggest things that I get asked is, well, we've seen all these condos and apartment buildings go up, so why is my property tax bill going up, right? They're seeing the growth, which should mean, as you said, Director Coyle, should mean, potentially at least, lower property tax bills for all of us. And I get it, there's other governmental entities on that, but our piece of the pie, can you speak to that? Like, what has our new growth been over the last handful of years, if you know that off the top of your head? Or not? I don't know. But, and how has that impacted us? Talking about that graph before, Alderman Brennan's been here long enough, I'm the dinosaur of the group, but, you know, you always see that graph in every budget cycle. You see it in this dramatic downturn. And, you know, when I was new, you start to sweat and almost fall off your chair, and, but it never happens because of the conservative approach of all our directors of finances, finance, and as well as our city managers, which is a great thing. I am nervous now, though, because there seems to be significant concern and changes to the budget because of the health insurance, because of the other items that you already mentioned. So how has our new growth helped us? And, you know, what, are there any of these complexes that are not online and that we foresee helping us? Because we've had significant development over the last, whatever, handful of years, five-plus years.
So one thing I will say, so new growth that happens within a TIF district, that new growth comes into the TIF. And so a lot of the developments that, that are very recent, right? That new growth and the impact of that is going to the TIF. Now, when that TIF is complete.
Did I hear you say you're canceling the TIF? Is that what, just kidding?
We did not say that. Then that, that new growth will come online with property taxes. New growth over the past, you know, kind of absent that, new growth over the past five years has been around 1%. And that's kind of just the, the new growth absent those.
1% including the properties within the TIF or 1% outside of?
No, this is outside of, outside of.
So total? Okay.
Correct.
Got it. Alderman Bastido.
Okay. So you're talking about maintaining the fund balance, and we got the COVID money, I know it's not called COVID money, what's the?
Stimulus.
In 2020. But we were maintaining our fund balance before that. So I'm assuming when we got the money, we started spending more, and now our fund balance is going away because we spent the money that we knew wasn't going to last forever. So.
Let me go to one dash nine for a second, because I think this, this, so if you look at, you know, the, the graph starts with 2015, and you can see in 2015, we were spending down our fund balance, right? Per our fund balance policy. And I think really, if you, when you look to 2020, we were probably getting close to the point that we needed to do something to address the fact that we weren't going to be able to keep doing that. And, you know, that, that was going to be an imbalance. But then what happened in 2020 is we received all of the stimulus dollars. So what that really did is took something that probably in 2021, we would have been having, you know, the conversation of, that we're having tonight of, we, we see this imbalance of revenue and expenses in the general fund that we need to address. I think that conversation would have been had in 2021, had we not received those stimulus dollars. Because you can see in the graph, it kind of shoots us up on this trajectory, upward trajectory, that then we start spending down again. And I think you would, you would kind of see that trajectory from 2015 to 2020 continue and the need to address it.
But we would see it jump up a lot higher if we had continued spending at the same rate we were. It probably didn't jump up as high as it did because our spending also increased, right?
We didn't increase, you know, there were some, I don't want to say one time, but there were some projects that the stimulus dollars help fund, right? Some of those, like the McKinley Storm Station and the parking garages, those are projects we would have needed to do anyway. So we really didn't increase spending because we received the stimulus funds. It helped us do a couple one time, it helped us with the city ERP system, that's something that we would have had to figure out how to pay for. But we didn't, we didn't increase staff, we didn't really add programs, there wasn't an increase, a structural increase in what we did because of the stimulus funding.
I think we also have to be careful that it wasn't so much they were increasing spending, like, now we have this new program and A, B, and C, it's our expenses increased. So although the insurance is extra large, it always goes up by seven, eight percent. Our pension contributions go up, our payroll goes up. So it's not, you know, it's nothing new, but we have been able to go through for many years without tax increases. I think the last significant one we had was in 2010. Because we've, our expenses go up, and we, we do have some increases in our revenue sources without doing anything. Our food and beverage taxes have gone up, our sales taxes may go up. But, but, so these funds that we've had from the federal government have allowed us to take on, say, well, our insurance went up and our pension, but we don't have to raise our taxes because we're using this, this extra, this fund that we have that happened to drop in our lap, and we didn't have this necessarily the same needs that other communities might have had to use their funds.
So what, when was the last time we increased property taxes?
Well, again, besides the ones we have to do by statute where the state says your pension, but for us, I think it was probably, maybe with one exception, 2010, that was a large increase.
In the levy?
Yeah.
So the years subsequent to kind of the 08, 09, we did, we did not abate some of the debt payments to provide an extra property tax to the.
Right. I mean, effectively, it's a property tax, but instead, again, abate is where we have bonds and we're required to tax to pay for those bonds. But if we can pay for those bonds out of other sources, we can abate or say we don't need to take that extra money. So in 2009 or 10, I think it was maybe nine or whatever it was, that, one of those two years, we did not abate for a couple of years, which is, yeah.
Sorry if I'm oversimplifying this, but, so when we're looking at this budget, do we have a choice? Like, is the choice either we're going to increase property taxes or cut something from the proposed budget? Is this discussion about to happen, or is this happening at the Finance Committee?
Well, it's, again, it's like, I don't want to, you know, I'm trying to, we haven't made any decisions. I'm just telling you, we're telling you that this is the fiscal, fiscal reality, and there may be cuts. You have to look at, you know, things, you could say, well, we could cut this, and you say, well, those are the things that make our community great. You can say, we might have to increase property taxes, we may have to increase other kinds of revenue sources. So we're not there yet, but I'm just saying, as we go through these budget discussions, that's a reality. And you don't, we don't have to decide tonight. If there is a tax increase, we'd have to decide by Christmas. It's not a Christmas present, but, you know, to get it in place. But that's why I wanted to spend a little time, more than we've spent in pastors. As Alderman Brennan pointed out, there's nothing different. If you go back, this has always been projected, it's just we're here.
But I don't understand, does the proposed budget include the increase in property taxes? I mean, there's a proposed budget in front of us.
Yes, it does.
Correct. Okay. So instead of the cuts, it includes the increase in property?
It includes both cuts to expenses as well as the property tax.
Okay. So if we don't want to raise property taxes, then something's going to have to change in the proposed budget.
We would either have to find another revenue source or make further expense cuts. Yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Alderman Bram, then City Treasurer.
Just because Director Coyle and I had a conversation earlier today, and make sure everybody in the council is on the same page that I am now versus before I walked in City Hall earlier today, what's represented here, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the operating budget has those proposed cuts.
Correct.
The CEB piece does not necessarily reflect what's in the operating budget. So if you've reduced, for instance, resurfacing streets, that is reflected or would be hypothetically represented in the operating budget, but not necessarily, if you turn back to CEB, would it show those same dollar amounts? I know in all my years, I've always count, looked at the CEB and focused so much on the CEB that I made the assumption that the operating budget always reflects that. And I think for the most part in the past, it probably has, but in this case, it is not that. And just so everybody's aware, when looking through the budget, that they could be different numbers and just be aware of that as we're looking through it.
It's a very good point. City Treasurer.
One observation I'll add to Alderman Bastido's question, and for context, the last two years, we've rolled between, you know, 11, 12 million dollars over from 2026, 2024 to 2025's budget. So when you look at 2027, you see this big cliff. I mean, it's very well, we could roll forward 12 million bucks of not used this year's budget, and then, you know, you add that to 4 million, and you're right back in the blue. So that's, you know, we ask the question of, why does it always look like this and it never happens? It's because the last couple of years, we've rolled forward, you know, 10-plus million of, of unused budget to the, to the next year.
Alderman Virgil?
The, so that $1 million increase in property taxes, so that's over and above just sort of the, the normal growth in tax base that you're talking about. How does that relate to the, like, sort of the proposal levy that we submitted, I don't know, a few weeks ago, or we reviewed in, in Finance Committee a few weeks ago? Is that, is this incorporated into that, or how does that work?
So the, the, the estimated tax resolution that we do is just a policy document where we do a, a simple increase year over year. So there's really no correlation between that document and, and the proposed levy. That was just a kind of a, no, no.
All right. So we're not done with this. We've got a couple more months of budget process, but I wanted to get this sort of upfront in minds, and we're going to continue and hopefully get through some of the actual department budgets, but back to, back to City Manager.
We're just trying to prioritize what to hit so that we can get to those department directors tonight before 10 o'clock. So I'm going to touch on the motor fuel tax fund. That's page one dash 10. In 2025, the city began focusing MFT dollars on funding capital projects, and this continues in 2026, focusing 75% or $1.8 million of MFT expenditures on capital projects. The 2026 projects include engineering for Butterfield and York intersection improvements and construction of a portion of the Northwest Elmhurst roadway rehab project. Five-year forecast is included for the MFT funds, which aligns projects in the CEB with the available resources in the MFT fund. It is important to note that the project, excuse me, the projected increases in motor fuel tax revenues are less than expected construction inflation costs. In 2020 through 2023, the city received $2.9 million through the Rebuild Illinois Program, a roadway infrastructure stimulus program sponsored by the state of Illinois. The city exhausted those funds in 2024, and going forward, the city will be challenged to balance the available motor fuel tax revenues with projects. We need to think about that as we move forward as well.
Just one other question on there. There've been discussion amongst DMMC about the issue of decreasing MFT because of electric EV. Is that something that is directly impacting us?
Yes.
And, and there's a discussion of whether the, not, we're not going to decide it, but discussion at the state level of how the state will make up for those diminishing revenues. Go ahead.
Thank you. The next fund is the Stormwater Fund. I just want to touch on that briefly. We have two projects that are included in that, and that is the Spring Road, Agleston area, which we have a federal grant that we, we are moving to this project, and the North Grawy Woods project. That secondary, the second project is budgeted for construction in 2026 and includes replacement of existing storm sewers and some ditch and swale improvements to help that area reduce flooding.
I'll touch just briefly on the Municipal Utility Fund and some of the highlights for that fund. If you look at the, the year-over-year changes in both revenue and expenses, in 2025, we had the Large Bundle Five project. So if you do any year-to-year comparisons, you'll notice kind of a substantial shift being that that project was budgeted in 2025 and is not being budgeted in 2026. Just to highlight a few of, you know, what is included in the budget from an MUF water rate perspective. So the budget does include adjusting the DuPage Water Commission rate, and just to explain what that is, we, the city, are charged for the water commodity that we purchase from DuPage Water Commission. We then turn around it and we charge the resident that same commodity rate. The DuPage Water Commission increased their rate to $5.80 effective May 1, 2025. The city has been subsidizing that rate. We have not increased our rate to match that. So our residents have been paying $5.60 while we are charged $5.80. So this budget does recommend moving the DuPage Water Commission rate up to match. The, the proposed budget does not propose an increase to the, what I'll call the Elmhurst volumetric water rates or the Elmhurst volumetric sewer rates. Those are proposed to remain flat. We do propose adjusting the CERC fees for the current and outstanding IEPA loans. This, again, this is something that the Finance Committee will review last year and again this year. We will, can. Committee will review last year and again this year. We will kind of give a full budget narrative and overview of where the MUF fund is and why those rate increases are being proposed, and that's something that that committee will review as part of that process. MUF expenditures are budgeted to decrease by 21.4 million or 28%. Again, that decrease is attributable to that shift in the Bundle 5 project. Some of the major capital improvements in the MUF in 2026, there is $1 million of engineering to plan for the next phase of improvements at the treatment plant. We've been referring to that as Bundle 6. We are continuing $5.1 million in the water main program in 2026. And then, as Manager Grabowski mentioned earlier, there is a $7.8 million project to rehabilitate the city's three potable water pumping stations. The, the proposed budget does maintain an adequate reserve balance in the MUF fund as required.
Now, I want, just want to add a comment here. So when we increased our water rates, and I remember people were saying, why are ours so high? And I think we were ahead of the curve. Our phosphorus project, we started working on it, and, and I know a lot of the mayors I talked to, I don't know if you see this with the City Manager, they were so pleased we were out there first, but now we see other municipalities going through what we went through, so they're fast catching up because of those federal phosphorus requirements. City Manager?
I'm gonna, I don't think we need to talk about Central Fleet Fund any further. Christina did a nice job summarizing that, so I'll kind of summarize here. For the 2025 levy collected in 2026, the city had estimated growth of 3%. The city has seen residential real estate cool starting in 2024 as rising interest rates, low inventory negatively impacted the housing market. The good news is Elmhurst Business Parks continue to be highly sought after. The city's industrial vacancy rate is 2.3%, which is lower than the DuPage County rate of 4.5%. Elmhurst is likewise highly sought after for commercial users. The city retail vacancy rate is 1.4%, which is better than the DuPage County average of 4.6%. We had many new businesses move in in 2025, and the Endeavor Health Elmhurst Hospital is completing two major additions to its complex in 2025, including the two-story addition above the Cancer Center and the two-story medical office building at the corner of York and Lexington. As Christina said earlier, continued new development helps to grow our property tax base and diversifies the property tax liability of all of our local governmental units. So in summary, we present this 2026 budget, which we believe to be a sound fiscal plan, though certainly much discussion is needed to get to that for the upcoming fiscal year. I'd like to thank Christina and her staff for all the work, all the department directors, of course, as we've gone through this process, and the City Council for overseeing all the finances of the city. And with that, we're here to answer questions, and we'd like to start with a few of the departments tonight to review their budgets.
Why don't we jump into the departments? We have four that, three of which are prob, well, two of which are probably not that time-consuming, then we'll see where we are. Only have one, perhaps, maybe two, Alderman. We tend not to go past 10, as opposed to the old days when we'd be here until midnight, so we'll keep it moving, but we will do a thorough review. Do you want to start with the first department, City Manager?
Yes, we'd like to start with fire protection, and I would invite Chief Duferd up to the table, and we'll start on page 2-41.
2-41.
So the committee, the whole agenda is a little bit different from the detailed, could be different from, I might have an old one in my hand.
Oh, for security reasons, I remember. We don't want to tell people where we're starting. 241.
2-41.
All right, thank you.
2-37, excuse me.
37?
So as we're all moving to that page, we, we've asked the department directors this year to shorten up the presentations a little bit, and maybe just give less highlights, but more significant highlights to limit those and to limit the number of goals. So please don't take their comments as, oh, they have nothing to say, but everything is in the budget book for you to review. If you have questions on any of them, please ask that, but otherwise, we've asked them to...
And we agreed on 2-37?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Chief, oh, sorry, I guess you need that.
Good evening, Mayor Levin and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present our 2026 Fire Department budget. 2025 will be one of our busiest years ever. Before getting into the budget, I'd just like to share some of our significant accomplishments over the last year and some goals for 2026. To provide a series, a superior level of service and to protect life and property takes a large commitment. That support from our elected officials gives us the department the opportunity to provide that service. This year, the department has never passed 7,000 calls in a one-year period. This year, we are on track to surpass that number, probably by several hundred calls. With that percentage-wise, it's been very typical. About 2/3 of our calls are EMS-based and 1/3 are fire-based. This year, the department will log more than 14,300 hours of training. That comes to about an average of 350 hours per person just for training. In 2024, the city was awarded a grant from the state of Illinois and Illinois Senator Susie Gloria Kilden for $850,000 to purchase a new Pierce fire engine. That engine went into service this year. Along with that, we were challenged to try to reduce the number of miles put on our ladder trucks to reduce wear and extend their in-service life. We have successfully reduced the mileage on our Tower 1 by 56% and Ladder 2 by 25% by changing our running orders and apparatus responses. And finally, the department will reduce our overtime by over $100,000 from 2024. Some of our goals, the mission and values of our department have not changed. We strive to provide the highest quality service to those who live, work, visit in our community while remembering that we are strongest when we work together. We have a couple of large goals for 2026 that have been carried over from 2025, though it's been delayed for two years now. This month, we will be putting into service new mobile and portable radios through the ETSB, which is the Emergency Telephone System Board, and DUCOM, which is our 9/11 dispatcher. That will greatly enhance our local radio traffic and overall communications between fire companies and other emergency responders. We'd like to give a special thanks to Mayor Levin for getting us past the finish line. He was integral in getting this done. It's been, like I said, a two-year waiting period to get this through, and we finally are at that point. Another item that was carried over is our training tower, and that actually looks to be like a good thing, as we were told, notified that we received, or we are going to be receiving a grant from Illinois State Senator Susie Gloria Kilden again, and House Representative Marty Deuter to pay for a significant portion of that project. We will work through committee to bring the state-of-the-art facility that poses significantly less health risk to our firefighters and reduces maintenance costs significantly. Our drone team is still in a work, still a work in progress. Members have gone through their necessary training, and we're working on coordinating that on all of our shifts. And then in December, we will be begin the process of purchasing a new fire engine. Fortunately, we were able to reserve a slot in the production line that enables us to receive that engine in about a year. Otherwise, the lead times are three years or more. That was, that allowed us to push our 2026 engine to 2027, and that one will also be a three-year lead time. With that, any questions?
Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. One of the things, and I don't know if this is directed at you, Chief, or Director Coyle, that I noticed on this short list for the Fire Department is the item that you spoke of for the training tower, hopefully getting a grant. I saw that on page 2-38 under Building Improvements, but, and I saw that under the CEB, right? It shows state grant. But is there anything that offsets it? I don't see like an inter-fund transfer anywhere. Where is that reflected in the budget of saying that it's a state grant and not coming from elsewhere?
So there's, there's two places you can look. The first is on page 2-6 in the General Funds, and you will see there is kind of 3/4 down the page. It will, in total, sum out all of the state and federal grants that are coming into the fund to pay for capital projects. So that's going to give you a sum total. If you go into the Supplemental tab at the very back of your budget binder, and I try to get to the page there, page 10-31 is where we include a very detailed schedule of all federal, state, and other grants where you can dive down into further detail.
What's the second page?
10-31, at the, in the, under the Supplemental tab in the budget. It lists out in detail all of the different grants, and that total gets carried forward into the front.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I will need to utilize the Supplemental tab a lot more often. That's very helpful. All right, I was just expecting to see it under this section as an interdepartmental charge or intertransfer or something along those lines, and when I didn't, I just kind of questioned on where we were accounting for that.
Great question.
So that helps. That is all I have for this section. Thank you. All right. City Treasurer?
I have a global IMRF contribution question, 52200, but this, this will apply to all these.
Correct.
Remind me, the contribution rate that increased 10% is based on how many years ago?
So it's based off of IMRF's funding policy, and so IMRF sets the rate of what we contribute on an annual basis. So the 2025 rate is 8.73%, and it's going to 9.6%. So every IMRF employee, we have to contribute on a monthly basis, 9.6% in 2026 of wages versus 8.73 in 2025.
Okay, and they're not, for some reason, I thought they based it off of, okay, here's our, what would, what would it have been two years ago? And I think two years ago, there was like a bad market year, and that's why it's high now. So it might not necessarily stay high. It might go back down next year.
Yeah, so it's just like police and fire pension, you know, good investment years to help decrease the rate and drive the rate down. I mean, IMRF is a well-funded pension system, so that, that, that helps, right? That's why our rate is only, you know, it's, it's still below 10%, but our cost for the, the next year is, is going up. Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, what is the police or fire rate this year? If you don't know?
I, I don't know the percentage of, of salaries off the top of my head.
Okay.
But we can get that.
Alderman Jensen?
On 2-37, the line about uniforms, 540035, a couple of years ago, 60,000, then 80, then 111, down to 60, then up to 150. What are all the uniforms like? I understand we have, what, 50 to 60 fire personnel who are spending thousands of dollars each for uniforms on average?
One of the biggest line items for uniforms is our firefighter gear.
Okay.
And one of the things that we're trying to anticipate for the future is there's what they call PFAs that are, they found to be in the gear, and there's been some legislation saying that we may have to replace that.
Got it.
Or purchase certain parts of it to replace in our gear, and we're just trying to get ahead of the game to, to see that.
So uniforms doesn't mean like what you're wearing now?
No. That would include our...
Over the big, okay.
Correct.
Awesome, thank you.
Alderman Ardini, then Alderman Brennan.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, 39 members on the department, so.
Thanks. Chief Duferd, something maybe for a circle back, but something I'm going to ask, I think of all of the departments, so that it's important, I'm not singling out fire, in light of the possibility of seeking either cuts or revenue, maybe for a circle back, I'm trying to imagine what would a fire budget look like if it were cut by 5%? So however, you certainly would know much better than I would, but if there was a way that we could envision, the best-case scenario, less 5%, that's something I'm imagining I'm going to be asking a bunch of departments so that we can have a better understanding of how to deal with what we're facing.
City Manager, is that, that's not in the budget now?
There are certain cuts that are in the budget. So when Christina and I finalized revenues and expenditures, I did ask the department directors to submit lists of 5% cuts. Some of those were enacted here, others were not, but understanding your question, I, I know what you're looking for.
I, I appreciate you pointing that. I didn't know that that was a, a baseline that you started with and ask it. Thank you for...
For instance, it looks like training and fire prevention are a couple ones that show some reductions here that would be...
That's correct.
All right, I think we're around Alderman Brennan. Can't remember. We'll get you, everyone, or then Alderman Baker.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have two questions. So I'm on page 237, 2-37, overtime 510200. You referenced being down, you know, from a 2024 level, but it looks like you're basically static to 2025. The, the department's fully staffed, right?
So to speak, we're fully staffed right now, but in 2025, we were down two firefighters, one due to an injury, long-term injury, he's been off, and then one that actually went off on a disability pension that we were anticipating was going to kind of come off the books, but that's drawn on for a long time this year. So we were basically too short, which created more of the overtime than we anticipated, even though we were, like I said, $100,000 less than 2024.
So because of the nature of the job, we're, we're just assuming that there could be potentially more of that in the future or retirement?
We're open now. We try to train our guys and keep them safe, so hopefully that.
Okay, that was question one. Question two, I'm on page 2-38. Alderman Bram referenced it, but from a building improvement, this is the, the fire training facility, right? So the 769, technically, that's being carried over, but it's in the, via a grant, right?
Correct.
And so the 384 is incremental to the, we need more than just the grant that's being provided to complete the training facility. Is that correct?
That line item also includes the roof for Station 1.
Yeah.
So it's more than just the training tower.
So the grant, okay, so that's fine. So have we included the monies here, the grant plus the, whatever we need from the 384? Is that going to suffice for us to complete the, the training facility?
I mean, we'll be going out to bid on all that stuff, and basically, we're going to try to live within our means to get the best, you know, training tower possible. Obviously, like other things, you know, costs go up on a yearly basis. We're just going to kind of, you know, take it as it comes.
And how much was the grant?
So the grant is 900,000.
950,000.
Yeah, 950,000, and which was our best estimate when our state rep and senator asked us to submit those applications, as Chief said, with everything in flux. We don't know as far as cost, but that's a pretty, pretty good estimate, in our opinion. I believe there's a Phase 2 to the project that would include new gas props.
Gas props, yes.
For inside, and that is not included.
That's in the cap for next year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You good, Alderman Brennan?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Alderman Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am on page 2-37 on SIC payout fees, and so that's line item 510300. In 2022, that figure was $85,000 roughly, and then the figures, as you can see, went down to 52 to 60. Estimated budget, 120,000. Looks like we'll spend all of that this year. Dramatic increase, 100% increase, and I wasn't here for those discussions. Next year, you're proposing 90,000, which is... Next year, you're proposing $90,000, which is 30,000 less. And 2027, dropping down to 41,000, which is what you proposed last year for 2026. So, I'm just looking for some understanding of those numbers.
So, our sick payout is comprised of two factors. The first one is employees become eligible to receive a payout of a certain amount of sick time that they have accumulated. If they have sick hours above a certain amount, they are accumulated to a net accumulation payout on an annual basis. And so, that's kind of, if you look at what I'll say, more so 23, 2024, those base amount years are lower, where we're just doing that annual sick payout. That's per our personnel policy and per our bargaining agreements. Where you will see the higher swings in sick payout, and when you look in 2025 and what we've budgeted for 2026, that's if there is a retirement that has either happened or that we are expecting to be happen. And our policy requires that we pay out accumulated sick leave up to a certain limit when an employee separates from the city. So, we try to budget-
If they're here for 20 years.
If they're here for 20 years. So, we try to budget as best we can. If we, if we think that there's going to be a retirement, we'll try to include a factor for that. In some cases, we know that to budget it. In some cases, we don't. But those retirements, if somebody has been here that long and has accumulated that balance, that can, that can swing that payment from year to year.
Follow-up. So, last year, the budget, or in 2024, yeah, the budget was 102,000. At this time last year, you estimated 25,000 would be used of that budget. Yet, you ended up, or we ended up at $60,000. So, again, just trying to understand how we could have been figuring 25,000 in October, and then, based on these same mathematical formulas that you're using now, is 41,000 realistic for '27, or is it just a place filler? And likewise, this year, are we looking at 120,000?
It's our best estimate. Again, until employees retire, we don't know what that number is going to be. And until that accumulation payout happens, it's kind of our best guess of what our average spend has, is going to be.
Thank you.
And by the way, as we go forward through the budget, through the whole process, if you're going to call out something, please, not only the page, but the line number. So, for that one, we would have said 2-37, line 510-300, just to help us jump through all these numbers. Alderman Bram? On page 238, I'm going to ask the same question essentially for both of these line numbers, 590910 and 590911. I think this, I know right next to it, right, the J form kind of does a little bit of some explaining. And I know we just passed it according to the mayor's statements earlier. But for the vehicle replacement contribution and the increase on 910, right, from 350 to approximately 580, are these new, newer estimates or newer, I guess, sharing of the expenses due to the policy that we just passed? And where did we come up with, I guess, the $1 million for the 911 vehicle replacement contribution?
Sure. So, I'll address 910. I'll just go in order, right? So, let's talk about 910. That's the department's contribution to the equipment maintenance, to equipment maintenance. So, this is a contribution that's going out of the fire department and it's going into the central fleet fund to pay for equipment maintenance. We did revise, kind of based upon the work that we did for the central fleet fund, we revised kind of each department's share of the cost for the central fleet fund based upon kind of historical maintenance costs to serve that department. So, that allocation between departments, right, total cost is still the same, but the allocation between the department shifted based upon historical maintenance costs. So, that was an update for this year to reflect, like, what's the true, what share of the fire department, or sorry, what share of the fleet maintenance is the fire department really using? What share of fleet maintenance is the police department really using? The total cost doesn't change, right? That's driven by fleet maintenance total cost.
For the fire, do we do a lot of those repairs in-house? I thought we did a lot of them.
Well, the central fleet fund pays for the out-of-house repairs, too. So, that'll be contracted repair. So, this covers not just our staff, but this costs-
But we're looking at that data as well.
Yeah. Covers the contracted repair and, you know, bigger trucks cost a lot more to repair. So, there's just a lot more cost when we have to repair one of those vehicles. Certainly, the usage of fuel, all of those things goes into kind of how we allocate that, that maintenance cost.
Is the assumption being that due to that reallocation or that sharing, that that increase of 230-plus thousand is due to that?
So, it's, yes. So, the, the cost allocation or the cost information that I got from the fleet department was kind of what's the maintenance life cost of, for the different departments? And then I use that to develop our percentage for each department's share of the cost. Yep. So, there's a little shifting around for that line item. I will say, if you want a view of it in one place, I'm going to make you go back to the supplemental-
That supplemental tab again?
It is. I just got to figure out what page it's on here. If you go to 10-34, this looks at central equipment maintenance, the fleet replacement, and also looks at the IT allocations because it's another allocated expense. But you can see here how the percentages were allocated in 2025, how we're going to allocate them in 2026, 2027. There are also departments in 2025 that were not being allocated expenses that do use fleet services. So, that's another reason why some of the shift is happening between those departments. But if you look here, you can compare the two.
And Chief, we send a lot more of the fire engines, a lot of that work versus cars is sent out. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Did you get, you have a part two on your question? Well, the part two was line item 911.
Correct. And 911 is, is an allocated replacement cost based upon the replacement value of that department's fleet. So, if you took the, kind of the longer-term cost of each vehicle in the fleet and came up with like the average amount needed to save each year so that the dollars were available to replace those vehicles, that's the amount that's getting assessed to the department. And so, again, the fire department, the reason that their contribution is substantial is because fire trucks are substantially expensive.
I get that they're substantially expensive, but I'm just a little surprised to see a million plus every, well, the two years shown, right? For that line item. I don't know what the typical fire truck is. We talked about earlier, the grant of 900-plus thousand, whatever that was. Maybe some of the larger ones are a lot more money, but a million a year just seems excessive in my mind.
It's, it's all of the trucks and then all of the other cars within the fleet. So, it's just, that's their annual cost.
Director, is it a million a year or just for these two years? I mean-
A million a year.
Which, to me, that would be like we're going to have a big bank account to be able to pay for any truck that the fire department needs, you know, in the near term by allocating these many dollars every single year. I just, I guess I don't have a good enough understanding of the whole fleet, what do we call it, the fleet maintenance?
Central Fleet Fund.
Thank you. The Central Fleet Fund. Could be a tongue twister. But to me, is the goal to have, be able to pretty much, I'm kidding here, go to a dealership and paying cash?
Yes.
Or is it to-
Yes. The goal is so we have the dollar, the goal is to set aside a fraction of each vehicle every year so that when we need to purchase those larger vehicles, the dollars are there to purchase them. And so, for, for fire trucks, that takes several years to save up over their replacement life. But it's not just the fire, you know, we have several fire trucks. So, it's not just replacing one, it's replacing all of them over time when they're due. And then it's also replacing all of the other vehicles within the fire fleet.
And if I can add to that, Mayor, that doesn't preclude us from still pushing out years if the fire trucks are in good shape. So, at 20 years, it doesn't mean that we are replacing this particular fire truck if we think it can still serve for a year or two. But you heard the chief say, right now, it's a three-year wait for a vehicle. So, we have to anticipate that. And costs have gone up significantly. 10 years ago, a fire truck was $850,000. It's now 1.2, 1.3. A ladder truck is now $3 million to replace. So, that puts a perspective into that $1 million each year for fire vehicles.
Understood. I guess, right, in light of our previous discussion of possibly all these different types of revenue increases, right, and possible other cuts, and working that in, working, what's it called again?
Central Fleet Fund.
Thank you. Are we being too aggressive too early in this program? And then still go, then needing to go back to the residents and saying, we're increasing X, Y, and Z? And I'm not picking on the fire department. I'm just saying in general of the total program.
I guess what, my suggestion would be, let's, let's hold that thought. And then when we look at the central fleet fund, we'll look at, you know, that fleet in total and where the fund balance projects. We did a five-year forecast for that fund that we did kind of both with the finance committee as well as is in this budget for us to review. And that is one of the, kind of the hallmarks when we did the fund is to have this annual budget review of that fund to kind of address and have that good checks and balances, both on are we contributing enough, right? Are we being able to meet our vehicles that when they come due? And then on the check balances of, okay, do we, do we think the balance in that fund is, is too much? And maybe we pull back on those contributions.
I think it's a good day to wait till we get there, but I, you're thinking, I mean, on one hand, I'm looking at it's like a condo, you know, they have a reserve fund, so when the roof goes, there's money there. But on the other hand, I feel like, you know, and we'll look at it then, I won't go into, because we're going to wrap up soon. But, you know, if a fire truck lasts 10 years, it seems like a lot, but we'll wait and look at it. And I respect that. I mean, I just, to me, it's almost like maybe we should crawl, then walk, then run. And we might, in my perspective, be running right away. And when we get to it, I will have further clarity. But, okay. Thank you. All right. Other questions on fire, Alderman Virgil?
Chief, earlier you mentioned the new training tower will have lower operating and maintenance costs, right?
Correct.
Is that what's being reflected on page 237, line item 531190 for building maintenance, where it drops off at the end? Is that what that's about, or is that something else?
What number was that again?
Thank you.
531190.
And I'm sorry, what was your question again?
So, the, the new training tower, you said you mentioned was going to have lower operating costs and maintenance going forward, right?
Correct.
So, this line item, you know, drops off. It's proposed to be 100,000 in 2026, and then 25,000 in 2027, which is lower than, you know, what we've seen in recent years. Is that due to the new training?
No, that's strictly our station maintenance. That line item is for station maintenance.
Station maintenance. Okay. So, what is contributing to that decrease here for the?
One of the main reasons, well, the increase or the decrease?
Well, this is, it's decreasing.
Yeah. One of them is, the fire station number one is probably the oldest city-owned building in town. It was built in 1979. So, we are in the process of trying to do, we had to do some safety upgrades this year. We were planning on doing some next year, some other stuff that we were doing around the station, redoing the locker room, doing some other stuff around the station. And we've decided to hold, hold off on some of that stuff to a later date.
Okay. So, that-
Yeah, that's one of your budget cuts essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, that would come back in, I don't know, 2028, 2029?
Yeah, we're hoping to eventually, you know, the locker rooms are from, you know, 19-
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, just, sorry, follow-up, the, the lower maintenance and operating cost for the training tower, is that reflected here somewhere?
There, no, not really. I mean, it's just the cost of the, what we've been told, you know, and we had the conversation. One of the, the highlights of having this new type of training tower is, one, that it doesn't have that heating and cooling effect with brick and mortar buildings where this, they basically tell us that we have to wash it out when we're done. And if there's any scratches, we sand it and paint it, and we're done. There's not very, virtually very little maintenance that we have to do on it over even a 20-year period.
So, so is the, you know, the operating cost for the training tower today, is this not here somewhere?
There's not, no. There's, as far as-
A little confused on that, yeah.
We did, we, I think the, the maintenance there is a new roof, tuck pointing, those type of things. I'm not sure that we see those in, in any of the past few years. I think is what you're asking, what have we done over the last few years that we're going to see reduced?
Yeah. I mean, we've heard that the, the operating costs for the current ones are higher than what they'll be for the new one, right? So.
Correct. If we, if we were to take our, our training tower right now and not do a container-type system, those estimated costs over the next 20 years would be over $1.6 million. And those are, you know, estimates from last year.
Right. So, I mean, so is that, is there line items that capture that maintenance we've been doing, you know, for years, right?
Yeah.
That we should see decrease going forward?
Yeah, it's probably something we'll get back to. We'll estimate that and circle back, yeah.
Circle back, Alderman.
City Manager, who would be covering, because we're past 10, but we have, would the chief be covering fire protection and, I mean, wireless radio and ESDA?
Yes, but we talked, we can, we can cut it off now for tonight and come back to that.
I think those would be about five minutes, wouldn't they?
We can make it very quick.
I mean, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to cut it 10, but then the chief doesn't have to come back. I think, is that right, too? Is that a question or?
For fire.
Are you still on fire?
Yeah. I didn't know we dropped fire.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, the budget looks great, Chief. When I look at the, the total deltas between '24 to '26 and '26, '25, you had a wash. And so, you're only, we're a $32,000 difference in the total budget. So, it looks like you're spinning, being careful with your budget. That's, that's number one, first observation. Number two was the payroll. So, the payroll went up from 231,000 roughly per person, full-time equivalent without their, the big number, the, not, what is it? The line item is, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that. 520210 on 237. If you take that number out, the contribution for, for the, what is that, Alderman Bram?
The police pension, the pension.
Yeah, pension, sorry. Having a mental blank here at 10 o'clock, 10:15. It looks like that's that breakdown between your payroll increase and the general and total, the benefits, meaning health cost, right? So, that looks okay. And then to wrap up my question, so we can get on to the next departments, if, if the mayor allows me.
Go ahead.
Is, and it's a follow-up from Alderman Bram's talk about the, on page 238, the vehicle replacement contribution, 590911. The biggest talk while we were in finance was from the fire department, why we did the, the new fund. It wasn't because, I know we have public works, vacuum trucks, it'll, you know, it could be three-quarters of a million. But once you jump off those two line items, single line items in, on our fleet, you know, we're down in the 150s and the 250s in the, the normal lighter trucks. So, I think it's very important to know what that 1004500 equals. And I'm going to guess if I went to the KEB on the F1 through F19 schedule here, that's in the KEB for the fire department, you've got 10 years scheduled across. So, I'm guessing if you took the totals and you divided by 10, you might come up close to that number. I'm just, I don't know. I don't have the math to prove that yet. So, it makes it a little bit difficult for us on council to see how I'm going to tie that number back, line item 590911, back to the KEB on the auto schedule.
So, the way that-
Follow me there?
Yeah. The way that the vehicle replacement contribution was devised, because you've got to remember, this isn't a mature fleet fund. So, and it is a fund that we are, we have to start. And so, we took the total value of the fleet and then figured out what kind of that annual contribution would need to be for the total fleet. And that came out to the, the 3.752 that's in the central fleet fund. And then we took kind of what is each department's portion of the total fleet and divided that total annual contribution we need by that department's share of the fleet. When you would get a more mature fleet fund that is more fully funded, right, and this kind of, I think someone, you know, made the comment about walking before you're running. And this, this kind of speaks to that a little bit, right? We don't have a mature fleet fund, so we have to- We don't have a mature fleet fund, so we have to figure out how to kind of start one. And so we looked at what is the, the amount that we need to contribute in the short term to be able to maintain vehicle purchases in a reasonable fashion, right? Ideally, in a fleet fund, you'd look and you'd, you'd almost see just like a savings account. If we, if all of our vehicles, you know, were at X point in their replacement life, we'd have X amount saved, right? But we're not at the point that we can do that with our vehicles. So I can't say that today, you know, if, if you had a mature fleet fund and, and I needed to replace the, the fire truck tomorrow, I should have eighty percent of that fire truck saved. But we're, we're not there. So that was the, kind of the reasonable and rational method to be able to contribute an amount to the fleet fund to sustainably fund it over a five-year term. Not to have everything in that fleet fund that we needed had we a mature fleet fund, but how can we make a responsible contribution that also, you know, is reasonable in light of kind of our operating budget?
Okay, just if it's okay to follow up?
There's probably a longer explanation than you wanted, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so my, my statement of taking the ten years off the KEB and adding up the, the annual totals at each of the bottom and dividing by ten years would be not the way we did it.
Correct. And, and you would, that is if you had a mature fleet fund, that is what you would do. But we, we aren't there yet. That's something that maybe we aspire to at, at one day is to kind of have, like, at X percent of the vehicle life, we have X amount saved. But we're not going to be there for several years. So we just need to look at, how do we responsibly fund the fleet fund so that we have dollars in there to make purchases when we need to?
And that rationale helps me understand how we're getting to these numbers. So I can go back and, I guess I won't be able to look at that unless you made a new detailed schedule of how you came up by department of our new fund, funding for that department into that fund. And maybe there's no way to get it back to a vehicle list that we have in the KEB.
There is not.
So it's not possible, at least on a line item basis.
We can give you kind of like the total fleet cost at the time and then each share, but it's not kind of based on each line item, right?
Right, all right, that's fair. And then just for the, the chief's final, for me, is you had an item here called a Polaris Utility Task Vehicle, UTV. And you got a TBD to-be-determined fifty-five. Can you tell me what you guys are planning on doing with your new Polaris?
Would be used for any kind of specialty response, like along the creek where we had a water rescue this summer. That would come in real handy for moving equipment